If you would come forward and we'll get a picture here in front of the podium.
I don't have to, I don't have to use my stage voice. Exciting. Okay. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you today. October is National Arts and Humanities Month, and for the past 24 years, the Museum and Cultural Center at Five Points has served as the anchor for arts and humanities in our community. There is no better demonstration of the difference that cultural and arts businesses and activities make in a community than those changes that have occurred in our own downtown since the museum opened its doors in September of 1999. The opening of the museum signaled the beginning of downtown revitalization. At that time, there was no First Street Square, there was a lack of dining options, there was a lack of retail options, and unless you were an attorney or a business professional coming down to work, there was not really a good reason to come visit downtown unless you were maybe going to Stamper's Furniture. The opening of the museum changed all of that. Suddenly, people had a reason to visit, retailers and restaurants had a reason to want to locate downtown, and investors began to purchase property, renovate buildings, and create downtown living options. Fast forward to today, and we have a thriving downtown with a variety of retailers, restaurants, and professionals, and community events throughout the year. I think we can all agree that the museum has increased the vibrancy of our community and quality of life for its residents, along with aiding the economic development of the downtown community. Recently, Michelle Mumert with the Community Foundation of Cleveland and Bradley County led the initiative for Cleveland and Bradley County to participate in the AEP-6 survey, which studied the economics and social impact of nonprofits, arts organizations, and the effect they have on their communities. During fiscal year 2022, from the 27 nonprofit arts organizations that participated in the survey, total expenditures from these organizations and audiences totaled $7,259,846 in Bradley County. A total of 130 jobs were related to these organizations and audiences, and local tax revenues of $147,065 were generated. Using a tool of the AEP-6 website, I've been able to estimate the museum's piece of these results. Out of 27 participating organizations, the Museum and Cultural Center at Five Points produced 24% of all expenditures, which is 6.6 times the average, 26% of all of the FTE jobs, which is 7.7 times the average, and 30% of the local tax revenues generated, which is 8.3 times the average arts organization in our community. I'm so proud of these results and to know that over the past year, while continuing to improve and create a museum that we can all be proud of, that we are helping to sustain a broader arts and cultural community as well. As a result of the generous support of our donors, you among them, we've been able to tackle all of our capital maintenance issues and pay off all of our debt. We are now able to put the vast majority of our earnings back into creating dynamic exhibits and programs that not only support the local artists, but also support tourism and our local economy. I would like to take a moment to point out just how special the Museum and Cultural Center at Five Points is for our community. While most communities have a downtown with 100-year-old buildings and beautiful churches and locally-owned businesses, it is rare that a community of our size can claim a Smithsonian-affiliated museum in the middle of it. We share this prestigious association affiliation with museums such as the National Civil Rights Museum in Memphis, the U.S. Space and Rocket Center in Huntsville, the Tele Science Center and the Booth Western Art Museums in Cartersville, Georgia, and the McClung Museum of Natural History and Culture in Knoxville. Additionally, we are the only regional history museum in the greater Chattanooga area. We are the only field trip location in our city that meets all K-12 state standards, and we will be reaching almost 600 students in the month of November with our education programs. Lastly, we are the only established nonprofit arts and humanities institution in Cleveland and Bradley County that offers consistent programs and exhibits, many of which are free for our community. The Museum and Cultural Center at Five Points is arts and humanities under one roof. Coming up in November, we have an array of these programs, all in celebration of Native American Heritage Month. These include a fine arts exhibit that is on tour from the Mid-American Arts Alliance. We're very excited to have it. It's called Savages and Princesses: The Persistence of Native American Stereotypes. We'll have a panel discussion on opening night with the artist whose work is on display in the exhibit. I hope you'll come and join us for that. We have a lunch and learn with the TVA Senior Specialist of Archaeology discussing their 1,000 Eyes program, which kind of talks about like, what do you do if you're gardening and you come across Native American artifacts in the ground? What do you do with those? Who do you tell? Or like, somebody called me once at the museum and said, "Hey, I just found a warbonnet with real eagle feathers in my friend's attic", which you're not supposed to have, but it came with a certificate of authenticity, and what do we do with this? And my answer was honestly, I don't know, but you need to get it back to the tribe that it belongs to. So this program discusses how to handle those situations. We have a history happy hour that's going to feature Taylor Young, who is a certified interpretive guide from Red Clay State Park, and she'll be talking about Cherokee lifeways. And then this all ends on December 2nd, when we will host the city of Cleveland's first-ever intertribal powwow, the Whispering Giants Intertribal Powwow, which is in celebration of the Cherokee Chieftain's 50th anniversary. It's going to feature music, crafts, storytelling, dancing, and more. We're getting a great response on Facebook, and I expect to have a really large crowd. I hope to see you all around the museum as we continue to provide attractive and impactful programs for our community and beyond, and continue to be an anchor for our community to gather, learn, and grow via the humanities and arts. Thank you so much for your proclamation. Thank you for supporting the museum, and I hope to see you all very soon.
I assume no one had any questions for Lucy? If not, thank you for coming and being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Oh, don't mind. I'm going to go take care of some baby.
That's fine. Go ahead. You all have in front of you a resolution that I passed out previously. It's a resolution for an interlocal agreement on a non-contiguous annexation. I know that's something you'll want to think about a lot, so you've got two weeks, but I do respectfully ask someone to put it on the agenda on November the 6th, if you could. If you want to go through two work sessions, well, you can have one public one and one private one. And either way, you're going to talk about it a lot over the next two weeks.
Commissioner Slater, I think, will have it put on the...
No one wants to put it on the agenda? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. The only other thing I have, and I'm not being critical, Grant, I just want to point out something. He did a wonderful job a couple of weeks ago, or week or 10 days ago, talking about the paramedic scholarships, the MT scholarships at Cleveland State. The article was really great, even had a picture of everyone. We appreciate people like the recipient of that one this year. We've got two more in it now next year. Bradley County contributes to that scholarship, by the way. But one thing, we've worked very hard on getting salaries increased. We haven't come to the commission and asked for a step plan. We haven't come to the commission and asked for more money, but we've got the salaries up, and the story referred to the starting salary of a paramedic at $41,000, but I'm proud to say it's at $48,000. So maybe there'll be an opportunity to do another paramedic story in the near future and tell the world, if you're thinking about a career, come to work, get a free scholarship at Cleveland State, and come be a paramedic with Bradley County EMS, starting at $48,000. Okay? Just wanted to point that out. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to remind everyone while you're speaking, please turn the mic on. The, I'd like to also welcome the Chamber of Commerce President Mike Griffith, the Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, Mr. and Mrs. Gleason, welcome, and Dan Rawls, welcome. We'll now start with the reports from the committees and/or districts on our right. Commissioner Beatty.
Everything's doing pretty good in the 1st district.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report this time.
Commissioner Alford. You have anything, sir?
Yes, the 2nd district's doing well. I was, Mr. Blake and I was thinking about the thing we just talked, voted or put on the agenda. Doesn't it have to go through two work sessions? Our policies in the past.
I'd have to check with the...
I'm pretty sure it goes through two work sessions before we vote on one of those situations.
We'll, we'll check and see if that's valid. If it is, it'll go through two work sessions.
We don't need to put it on the agenda if we're going to not vote on something.
Does anyone else have any knowledge about the two-work session?
He's correct. I voted against it that day because I didn't think we needed two work sessions, but it did pass. It is policy. But we can always suspend the rules.
No, we're not going to be suspending the rules.
I voted against it, but it is policy.
We, we will pull it off the agenda. It'll go through two work sessions. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Other than that, 2nd district's doing well.
Thank you, Commissioner Bleach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oswald III Finance Committee met on October 17th to take up the opioid appropriations. We took in, we had some good interviews and talked to the organizations. The, it's on the next finance agendas to talk about the amounts and stuff like that. The other thing was the, as you well know, back in the spring, this commission set a deadline for September 30th for the water fund, federal money, art money. That's obviously come and gone, and the Finance Committee will be making a formal recommendation to the full commission on November 6th. So I would like to put that on the agenda for November 6th, the recommendation from the Finance Committee on appropriations for the water fund for art money.
Done.
Other than that, all's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing, Oswald III. I do want to take an opportunity to spread flowers among the living. I've heard that quote before, and Dr. J is here, and I just want to express my appreciation to Dr. J, pastor at North Cleveland, and a tremendous shepherd to a mentor of mine, Mr. Ron Spangler. And Mr. Spangler passed away yesterday, a year ago, I believe. And I know Pastor J, that you really were a tremendous friend to that family, and I know that you still are, and shepherding North Cleveland. And I want to say I appreciate you and the love and the commitment that you have for your flock, and how you lead and how you love. So thank you, Pastor J. That's all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Winters.
Let me piggyback on your comments. I happened to be in the funeral with you and saw your care and love for your sheep, and particularly Ron and the family. And you left him at the altar all night before, just before the funeral. And it was just beautiful the way you handled that, and it's already been said to your great pastor. We're fortunate to have great people in this community. Ron was a super...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
I'm on the Finance Committee, was able to sit with the chairman as he handled so well, six tremendous community servants, as they shared all of the work that's done to attack the opioid problem in our community. So there are six that all were very well-prepared, presented their case of how they should get a certain amount of money. It'll be our challenge to take a limited amount of money to give to those, recommend to you all to give to those. But as I left that meeting, I thought, what a great community we have that can have those six. And the banner did a great job of going through all of those, giving the pictures of those individuals, many of them, as they presented. So we're fortunate to have warriors in that challenge in this community, out there on a daily basis, needing funds as all are needing, most all are nonprofits. So as you look at the banner as they presented those names, you see those people in this community. Tell them you appreciate what they do, all those different groups. I won't call one out over all six, but it was, it was a great meeting to just see the microcosm of how great this community is at meeting needs, and they did a great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Yes, I was at Parkview Elementary today with Dr. Cash and Denny Collins, Josh Taylor, and man, them teachers out there, they are some fine teachers. They do a wonderful job. And after it was over, me and Josh, we walked down the hallways and was going to each different classroom. And just the, each classroom was totally different. It spoke of each teacher, how she handled her kids, and the way she had decorated her rooms. And the school out there is absolutely amazing. It was the clean, it was beautiful, and everybody out there was so friendly. So if y'all ever get a chance to go to Parkview, go out there, check it out. It is amazing school. Thanks. I have nothing else.
Thank you very much. I would encourage the commissioners to visit all the schools in their district at the very minimum, if you have an opportunity. Commissioner Thompson.
Got one question. We got any more money in the bucket for water?
We didn't use all of it. The mayor, I believe, is preparing a report for the next finance meeting on what was left. In short, yes, there is, but the deadline is coming on.
Deadline come and gone. Where's the money at?
The bank.
Can you still spend it for water?
Where are you going with this?
I just want to know if you gave money for water.
Like you said, Howard, you didn't spend all the money in the bucket, but you've passed the deadline that you all approved. And so the water is, based on your rules, has been totaled out, and the money will then go to other buckets, and I'll bring you a revised ARP plan possibly on November the 6th. I don't know where you're going either, but that's...
Where I'm going, I see people want some water. That's usually what we're going for, so...
But they chose not to meet the deadline that you all imposed.
Well, it's, it's, it's an extension of water line that needs to get to a certain area. And of course, and that provided by Ocoy Utility. And, and I'm sure that they probably don't have that type of money to run water line that calls it changed to about six chicken houses, I believe it is, and some other residents and...
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Commissioner Thompson, it's the commission's prerogative. They want to do something different. We're just going by the rules and what was set. But remember, the, we suspended water projects with HCI. We've been doing those for years and been very successful with that, I think. Obviously not the same amount of money, but, and the residents participated, so there's tiny little differences. But the HCI water projects will come back online now, and they can apply for that next go-around, well. So we're basically transitioning back to the HCI money that's set aside each year. So we will continue to do water projects, obviously not the amount that we did with art money, but I would encourage them to apply for HCI money.
Okay. I'll, I'll have them to do that.
Yeah. I mean, Mayor, is that your understanding that we're going back to the HCI method in the next go-around? So we just didn't want to do them at the same time because why do HCI if you're going to do art?
Okay.
Now that federal money's kind of over with, go them back to HCI. Thank you.
Okay. What, what happens to that money now?
That's the $64,000.
The buckets will, the ARP bucket, the plan, will be adjusted and brought back to you all for an update for the plan, now that we know the balance that's been spent out of that particular budget, and it will be moved to potentially a couple of other buckets. But that'll come to you all to approve an updated plan, probably on the 6th.
But that could go back to water? Could.
As you famously say, with eight votes, we can move the courthouse.
Well, I was about to say, if you've got eight votes, you can move it back to water, right?
But I will tell you, I think there are other things that have come up. The fence around the jail is going to be something we're looking at with the proceeds, or the difference between what was budgeted and what was spent with water. So there are other things, I believe, that are, you know, in the queue, so to speak. But I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Okay. I just need a little answer there. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Goins, please.
5th district's doing well.
Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Bradley High School on their win against Cleveland High School Friday night. Sorry, Milan. Also, congratulations to Walker Valley Band in their superior rating this weekend in their band competition. They placed first place for guard, first place for overall, and second place for percussion. And then best of luck to the Walker Valley soccer team that is state-bound this week. I believe they play on Wednesday at 6:30 against Chattanooga Christian. And then I'd like to thank Woodman Life and State Representative Dan Howe for their donation to Bradley County Fire and Rescue. Several of us had the opportunity to attend a breakfast on Saturday where the Bradley County Fire and Rescue was gifted a large American flag that will be used to honor and remember our heroes in funerals at other special events. This beautiful symbol of our nation's unity will serve as a powerful reminder of the sacrifices made by our brave first responders. So it was a, it was a neat little breakfast that we were able to attend on, on Saturday morning. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I have nothing to note. Thank you.
Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to echo that with Cindy there. I was also there and acquainted with WW Johnson and Joyce, so that was great for that dedication to that flag. But number one priority for me is not to forget my wife's birthday was Thursday. She was the amazing 59-years-old, and she's catching up with me. And the only other thing I have is congratulations to Cleveland High School Girls Volleyball State Championship. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too was going to wish Cleveland High School on their state championship. Second in a row, back-to-back state champions in volleyball, which is a huge success for them. And Ms. Lucy is, is gone, but I did want to mention and thank the mayor for, for reminding me. I think it starts this week, Beauty and the Beast, being that it is Arts Month, Beauty of the Beast at Bradley Central High School. You can get tickets at the door. They have shows all throughout the, the weekend, all the way into November as well. So if you would like to attend a really great performance, you can visit a great, great drama club at Bradley Central. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We are reaching the point in Bradley County and Cleveland, if you're going to do sports, you got to walk right through this county.
Absolutely.
We're really, we're really moving ahead. On the agenda items, Agenda Item A, Commissioner Mike Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, my eyes aren't as good as they used to. I'm remembering this from the phone, so... You've got the... Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning to, I re-zoned from General Industrial I-1 District to Forest Reagricultural Residential District, property located at 294 Lead Mine Valley Road Southwest and identified by Tax Map 065 Parcel 057.00. This can be seen on Pages 2 and 3. It was recommended for, for approval by the planning commission.
What was the vote?
I believe it was all in favor of it.
Thank you. That will be on there. Next is communication from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak, please? One up there. Yes?
Before Mr. Dan starts talking, two things. I was looking through this CD-annex thing. I need to make a note. I would like to see if, if you look at these maps, you can't even read them. So if we could get something that you can read, I'd appreciate it. We've got several weeks to do it. Then a month, check and see if we've got our sign posted that we're supposed to post when they want to zone something.
I don't think the sign has been posted. Lori will be back Wednesday, and we'll get that taken care of.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Also, when we were looking at this, I was looking to see if they had an idea of what they, they were planning on being put on the property. They have a tax rate on there, but no... I, I mean, you know as well as I do, when you go on the planning commission, normally you have a suggestion or an idea of what's going to be put on a property before zoning. I would love to know what they suspect is going to be placed on this property.
It's a property that I think it is at the corner of Eureka and Georgetown. You could put anything commercial there. That's a heck of a location. We can try to get it.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan. Your show's...
Good seeing you all again. I'm just here on a little bit of a follow-up, some of the questioning of the Election Commission that's been going on for quite a period of time. You know, and the problem appears, once again, as I've mentioned before, that there's a lack of integrity and a lack of accountability in that office. We met with two of our three-state legislators, and I realize that you guys don't have any direct, you know, supervisory position over that office, but we presented the legislators with a considerable amount of information, you know, written information and also video information. And so maybe possibly you could contact them, you know, because we seem to have got into this like stall mode, like all of a sudden, oh my gosh, we're getting into the, you know, we're getting into the, the time of year where there's nothing but, you know, holidays and stuff. So the problem being is this, this is put off until they start in session, and we're talking about sometime in May. I think that they've had the information for over five weeks. And, you know, I know it's busy, your kids play football and all those important things that, that go on rather than the, you know, the, the problems that we have in the office right across the street here. But I think that there should be some level of priority given to these type of situations, especially when, you know, I mean, there's no accountability to the taxpayer, but you keep taking their money and you don't even show up for work. You know, I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of garbage is that? I mean, it's been over and over and over again, and like I said, I realize you don't have any direct supervision over that office, but you could call these legislators and say, why, why are, why are we not moving forward? I mean, because my understanding is, is that maybe the Election Commission, they seem to insinuate that they don't even know that any of this has gone on, even though it's been in the paper and stuff. So I don't know, but I think that this meeting that we've requested, you know, that's a minimum that should be done, because the only oversight to these things are through the legislators. And part of our conversation, you know, with, there was a text that was sent by one of the legislators, said that the state office, much earlier this year, had talked to the director over here, the administrator, and that they had addressed this issue, so the state knows. And so, you know, one would think that that would cause, you know, some level of accountability, but apparently it doesn't, because on the dates, I actually did it six days this time, from May 6th, a Friday, to the next Friday, which is actually six days, which was the 13th. In that six-day period, $100,000 employee worked nine and a half hours. Nine and a half hours. So I know football's important, and holidays are important, and Halloween's important, but I really think that the lack of accountability in this office is much more important than Halloween or football or any of that stuff. And I will provide, anyone who wants to look at the video, as I've always said, I will provide you the documents, anybody that wants to see it. If you don't think that I'm being truthful, I'll gladly provide you the document. But you can rest assured, I'm not up here if I don't got it. And I've got it, and I've got more. But what are we going to do? What are we going to do? I mean, we have gone forward with everything that we know how to do, you know, but maybe, maybe calls from y'all will say, hey, look, we need to get this meeting set up. We need to get this together, because the only people that are accountable for that position is the Election Commission. position is the Election Commission, and the Election Commission is held responsible by the representatives. You guys can't do anything. I can't do anything but this. But don't you think it's pastime? Don't we think it's pastime? I truly do. I mean, you know, I'm glad we win volleyball games and football games, rah rah re, kick them in the knee, whatever, but you know what? We don't have any accountability in the government here. There's no accountability, and this has been going on and on and on and on, you know, with an unbelievable amount of redundancy, and this individual flips their nose at everyone. You talk, the state talked to you, so then you decide you only need to work nine and a half hours in six days. I got more? Thanks, guys.
Hey, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question for you. Who is she appointed by, Dan?
Okay. What happens is, is that she is appointed by the state legislator. Her oversight is through the members of the Election Commission. So they are the ones that have oversight over her. What I think the biggest problem is, is they think they're on the same team, and in reality, they shouldn't be on the same team. It should be a supervisory, employee-type of relationship, but when you think you're all on the same team, you ain't supervising a whole lot, and this has been going on, man. And I, you know, this is just this year. How long's it been going on before that? How much taxpayer money's been taken for nothing in return? You know, I mean, anyway.
Dan, my understanding is that the five election commissioners are appointed by the state representatives, and those five appoint the administrator, and so they're accountable to her.
So our state legislator can remove them if they don't act on the information and put somebody in that position that will act and will be a supervisor.
So it's basically on that five-member Election Commission that has authority to remove her if they wanted to, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dan, we're going to move this over to the Legislative Committee chaired by Commissioner Winters. We've gone through this before, about a year ago on the budget, so we'll pick up and try to move something. I don't know what, but we'll try.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before the commission? Thank you. Announcements, next meeting, voting session Monday, November the 6th at 7:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, spirits, legends, and lore tomorrow at 6:30 at the courthouse square. And we are adjourned.